Okay, we'll bring the meeting to order. All at 7:30. And all stand to the right to lead us.
Laid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The men of secretary, if you will call them.
Here, Anderson.
Here.
Henderson here. Shaw.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Slads.
Here.
Delak.
Here.
Okay, so the approval of agenda. Got nothing to add, nobody else does?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay, so approval of meeting minutes from April 2nd.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
No, I didn't have a chair report.
Oh, well, the corrected one says none.
I would say it says none.
The second, the one he got.
Oh, the first one. I got a question mark on mine.
Listen, I want you to the second, yet you did it twice.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As long as it's the right one.
What's, yes, yeah. Abstain? Do you get to abstain? Oh, you do.
I don't want to abstain.
You have to abstain.
Oh, yes, I do.
You weren't there. So you were up there.
Yeah, okay.
That's the first time I've ever heard I don't want to.
Okay, so don't need ordinance amendments. We've been talking about this for like, I don't know, three years, four years? So I went over my ordinance book and I had paperclips under things, but it was so long ago I even forgot what the paperclips meant. So I went over Becky's list, which was quite good. It didn't even get halfway down. So, so did everybody get a chance to kind of look at Becky's list? Okay, so let's do this kind of, so I think what we should do is we're gonna, we're gonna do Becky's list, but in the meantime, let's figure out what we want to do. So everybody should, Mr. Simpson, you should read this book from entirety, from front to cover. What?
Tonight?
No, not, not tonight. But, you know, in your, in your leisure time. So, I mean, all of the planning commission members should have read this so that you know what we're talking about. So, and going over Becky's list, I found a lot of things that we need to change. Some are miniscule, kind of like your, your, one of them was a typo thing, where they just added an S where they shouldn't have. But some of them are kind of major, so let's kind of go through this list together and we'll attack it that way and we can kind of see what we need and where we stand. So, this would be section 1, 1, 2, so section 1 dash 12. So, this is about, um... Oh, sorry, it's 1 dash 11.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So it's page 1 dash 5, but it's 1 dash 11B and the question is reoccupancy. So I looked it up in the dictionary in the back of the book and there's nothing on reoccupy, but there is something on occupancy. So you would naturally think that any time somebody moved into a building that was vacant, but it's not stated that way. So reoccupy the way this is could be somebody that moved out and somebody else moved back in. Or it could be that it was vacant and moved back in. So I agree, kind of agree with Becky that when we do something, that should be specified in, at least in the definitions. Isn't that what you would think?
Yes, 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 yes.
As to what that word means. So it's just one of those things that we should kind of look at. So the next one is the public hearing process. So, Becky came up with something about the, that...
It used to read that it can't be more, I had to notify them not more than 15 days, but not less than five days or 10 days. Now, the new one says that I cannot notify them not less than 15 days. So in reality, I can notify them 60 days ahead of time, the way it's written, which to me is kind of unfair.
Doesn't give you a chance to prepare.
Well, if I do, if I give you, if I send you notice two months ahead of time, you're gonna set it aside. I got two months.
Yeah, and then you're gonna forget about it.
And then you're gonna forget about it. So I don't have a problem with it saying I have to do it not less than 15 days, but it should be not less than 15 days, but not more than 30 days or something, there should be another M to that, you know? And I do like the 15 days because the US postal system is not 100% reliable. If I only give, if it gives me 10 days, you might not get it in that 10 days, so...
So then, in the same section, in, in section A, it says that the general public, general, or general public hearing procedures, and then it says about zoning ordinance, tech, math amendments, but it also should have zoning changes. So you change from R1 to an R1M or an RM, something like that. So it's not really an amendment, but then SALU, that's a public notice, that's a public hearing. Lot split is a public hearing, so all those things should be added into it also. Okay, so anybody's got anything else to add on that one? Okay, so then we're going over to the table of permitted uses. So this is for two. So this table's kind of nice and it's easy to use. And so the question was right in the very beginning, and the first part is veterinary clinics and kennels. Well, the question is kennels, but if you go over to the residential section, it's, it's not permitted. So there's a discrepancy there, and here it says that it's special approval. But if you kind of look right at the districts, it says R1, R1M, O, C1, C2, and I, and P. So R1 is R1 single family, RM is residential multiple, O is office, C1 is the downtown district only, C2 is the commercial district outside of our, outside of the downtown, I would be industrial. And P, I'm not sure what P is other than maybe parking, but we don't have any parking. So why do we even have it? So that really needs to be gotten rid of. Then the next page down that says office usage, well, we have a section for video rental establishments. Not sure when the last time somebody came in for rent, with rental, to be set up as a business. I'm not even sure the last time somebody went in to rent a video. So there's certain things like that, and then there was something about the, Becky said something about the welding shops. Well, my background is industrial, and basically the whole industrial section needs to be redone. So when we did the, I don't know if I did a, so I wasn't involved in, with this one, but we were trying to do something where we didn't have any hazardous waste. So this allows for a whole lot of hazardous waste. So electroplating, that's a hazardous waste, smelting, plating. So all those things are in there in, in special approval. Well, we really didn't want to have any of those things at all. It's got paint mixing and spraying, well, but then it's, a body shop predominantly is, half of their thing is paint mixing and spraying. So that's all, and it's permitted, so the things are all over the board. So the, one of the things here, it says that welding shop is special approval. Well, then it says a welding shop is not special approval, it's permitted, but in a auto body shop can weld and you can do, there was another thing where it was, um, where was it here? You can, um, you can work on metal. Well, if you work on metal, you're, basically you're gonna machine it or weld it. So it, the whole thing needs to be redone in the industrial section. Other than that, the other sections are fairly close, but the industrial section needs to be redone. Anybody else? So we already kind of did the kennel thing. Home occupation, that's it. It says that kennels are permitted, but in the, in the chart it says that, I don't know, what does it say? Special approval. Yeah, that's a special approval in R1. So and then there's another one, it's just typos, section 7 dash 02, B2, C and E. There's a word in there that's supposed to, that both of them have S's. So that's getting really down to the...
Nitty gritty.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Just ask up later.
It took me a while just to even find them. So then there was a section on fences, and this is kind of where I'm gonna go a lot slower, 'cause that's about as far as I got. 'Cause I got hung up on the industrial thing. So let's take a look at 8, 1 dash 101. Okay, so what do you... What do you have here, Becky? Subsection C.
The fences. It talks about just a short section of fence. It allows you to replace without a permit. We don't require a permit for fence anyways. My question is, is, and most people still don't even let us know that they will replace an existing fence and they replace the whole fence with a fence of like kind. However, several times those like kinds are not allowable under current ordinances. So if they're repairing a broken down fence, but the whole fence is broken down, so they're replacing the whole fence, are we, how are we gonna look at that?
Right, 'cause a lot of the old defenses don't need code.
Don't meet the current ordinance.
Right, so you're getting grandfathered because you're repairing, but you're not...
So if I replace the eight foot section?
Yep.
I'm okay, I can, I can replace that eight foot section at 48 inches in my front yard, 'cause that's what it was. Three months down the road, I can replace another eight foot section of that 48 inch fence, and I'd still be okay.
You keep doing it till you want all the way around.
But if I hire a company to replace my whole fence all at one time, I can't do that because I don't abide by the current ordinance.
Which we've seen that too.
Correct. So, and that's fine, but that's the way it wants to stay, if that's, I think it needs to be a little more explicit about the repair of a section and... And I'm saying this because it's what I deal with every spring, with the phone calls.
Used to be when things were repaired, if they were repaired more than 50%,
But that's not defined anywhere.
It's not, doesn't say that in there anymore.
But if you don't require a permit for fence anyway...
We require a non-cost permit. We require you to let us know you're putting in a fence or replacing a fence to verify that you are abiding by current zoning ordinances.
Then the easiest way to do it is if you're installing or repairing a fence, you still have a no cost thing.
Okay, but, so are we saying that if it's more than 50% of the fence, that's what needs to be more clarified, is what I'm saying? If more than 50%, then has to abide by current ordinances, then it's like starting off from scratch, over 75% or whatever you want to say.
Like, some percentage.
You know, but because somebody's gonna argue, I just repaired my whole fence, that's all I did.
Right, yeah, the whole fence. Then we were saying the percentage of it, you may be able to kind of size that someone doing that. They put fence this month and I need to put fence a piece of it next month. So once they...
More important though.
40% they've got.
Right, and that one is enforcement.
Well, quite honestly, that's not the issue. It truly isn't the issue. The issue is that people say, my other fence, you're gonna have a problem with my other fence, and it was falling apart, I just wanted it to look nice. I didn't think there was a problem. So, and comes to light because they got a little letter saying your fence does not comply. So the enforcement isn't as much of an issue as, we kind of need to spell it out black and white.
I'm getting, I'm with you there too, but with that whole section anyways has been problematic in terms of what are we ever gonna do about it in the first place? We've been challenged on it several times, and then...
Need as far as the fine goes?
Yeah, or take it, yeah, or just doing something, you know, taking it back down.
We have, in my time here, we have made people cut it down if it's too high in a side or front yard.
But not many. The last one was when, well, we did on that, on the corner, right behind the park there. I can't remember her name, I don't know if she's still there.
Oh, no, there's that one since then.
She's still on the other, on the other corner. They had to cut that one down in the front yard, is that right?
Right. That's, I just, if it's more plain English, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And requiring the no fee permit is crucial. Because then you can see right away, oh wait, you can't install this fence at that height, or you can't put a solid fence into your front yard. It's, you know, it's not permitted, and they don't go ahead and do it and then activate them. If they go ahead and do it and you told them, no, that doesn't, that doesn't conform, well, then it's their fault. But when people just don't know, then it's not really that one of the permits.
Privacy fence in the fronts promote before too.
Quite honestly, even a forfeit fence in front. And that's what I see every day, you know, maybe that's, you know, but...
Then a living arrangement too. So that one, yeah, I think, that one, we know there's a, there's quite a bit of work to do there overall. But those are the, you know, those are the big pain points you see on a regular basis, on a annual basis.
So since we're talking about it and we're taking notes, what do you think that we should do about including the repair? So where do we draw the lines? At 50% or 25% or all the fences to be repaired or what?
I mean, was there something, was there anything before that?
Yeah, it used to be 50% on anything that was destroyed. Remember the house that burned? And that was the big issue, you know? One determination was it was less than 50%, so they could rebuild, and one determination was it was more than 50% and...
It was actually over 50% because they paid him for 100% of the house, but he went in and worked on the house and got the house less than 50% damaged. And that's what happened. So it really wasn't, it was 100% or 50%, he'd already done a good section of the work, gutting and replacing some stuff before he even got an inspection.
Right, but there's where the footnote of, we know that it was 50% because that one was one of the issues that stand out.
But then, okay, so what do you want to, what do you, how do you want, what?
Should create or decollet a 50%? I'm fine with that. That's what it was before. I think that's fair. I mean, you're always gonna try to find someone trying to wiggle them right around, and somebody else, you can't, you know...
Okay, so if somebody, if somebody lives on a corner lot and the car misses a turn and takes out that side of their fence, can't put that fence back up if it was different from the current zoning ordinance, if that was half different? I'm just, that was out of the...
That's a good point.
That's what I'm gonna get.
It's fair, it's one of the conditions that go along. If your idea is to rent, you're doing as renovation, and something, you know, that you, or the, or the, and time has run down, that's fine. But if it's something that was damaged, you know...
To react of God or whatever.
How silly would it look to have, you know, 50% of your fence by a new ordinance compared to, you know? I guess that's the way I would look at it, you know? Okay, so half the fence is bad, you're gonna make them replace the whole fence because otherwise it's gonna look silly. I mean, you know what I'm saying? And then they're gonna look at us and say, you just want me to spend money. Well, it's not my money you're, I mean, you're not giving it to me. I get it, I understand, I just gotta be able to talk to people.
That's a good point.
Or it could be a decorative fence that doesn't apply to the ordinance, but I think there needs to be some type of stipulation or some type of variance, like the planning commission, when we get something from the planner, he gives us his guidelines, but he also gives us on the last page, a little bit of gray area that we can, we have wiggle room on, so we could do something like that too.
And Becky ate gray areas.
Was that?
Me and Becky ate gray areas.
Just what are our neighbors up to, Romeo, Richmond, things like that?
So I think that's something to ask the planner for, about. Okay, so let's move on. So now we're at section 9, 06, or 9.06 design requirements, parking on lawns.
And I only bring this up because, okay, it specifically states in there you cannot park on lawns or unpaved areas. If you drive through here anytime, okay, you got any number of your residents that do that. So how do you have an ordinance that you don't make anybody bother with?
Yeah, it's true. I mean, if you pick simple things, fair time, graduation parties, you know, I mean, the easy ones like that, so...
Or eliminating side parking on the side of the road, on the streets that we pave.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I can't get one car out of the driveway without putting one car on the grass to get the other one back out and swap them back and forth. So when, mostly older homes here in town only have single, single driveways.
So how many people park on the driveway, or on the grass every day?
Oh, I bet it's, any given day I could drive here, through here, and there's a minimum of 10 cars on, that's not...
I'd be tired of that.
It's a minimum, I don't drive through the whole village. I mean, I'm saying from coming up into work, I'll bet you if I drove through the subdivision area instead of coming straight up Fulton, I'd need at least 10 cars. And that's at 7:30 in the morning. So every day, you have, you have a ton, you have, you have way more, and just like Joe said, people that don't have their roadside parking anymore, or now they have a teenage kid driving, so they're putting the car over on the grass.
So is there already a parking, and the requirement, is there already, is this already...
Yeah, it says you can't park on the...
You cannot.
It says you cannot.
So it's just a matter of enforcement again?
You shouldn't be able to park on the grass on, over a, on a temporary basis. You got a lot of people over, park on the grass. You know, fair, you park on the grass. You know, have a party, have something, park on the grass. On a routine basis, I mean, doesn't make the house look good if you park on the grass.
I, I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
You know, none of these you got are really easy ones.
But they're all ones I hit.
Yeah, so where did the next one come from?
Where did it come from?
Yeah, because you're right, I know there's, there's one right across the street from there.
Well, and it actually says in here, um, let's see, that anybody that didn't comply has to come up to compliance now. Nobody's grandfathered in on that one.
Check that to Becky. Check that to.
I'm reading. You can read over there. Find where it says that.
Only part of Becky shows up in the camera then?
My voice is heard, not my pretty face. Yeah, it says that you can't...
So that would include if somebody, if you had the part, let's say on the corner, you had, and then you did the detached garage on the other street, so you have your front and the side?
Um, I don't know about that one.
Another thing you run into is how wide is one access? Where I'm living right now, the driveway comes up, right next to it, the garage comes down. Does this say that you have to...
Hang on, I'm looking for it. Because I read it, 'cause I would, 'cause I'd say thought all those people are grandfathered in. 7, 8, 1, it says, all parent parents shall not increase the number of driveways or road access beyond those entitled to parent permission.
It's dark, it's so dark.
Maybe I had both, that one last one was a guy.
Yeah, I don't see that one, Becky. All right, so the challenge is, Becky, what you found was, it says one, it says you can't, you have to come to confirm, and we have seven adults. Which then by ordinance would mean you'd have to comply, or should have already been brought into compliance.
Or you should not...
Or close off that it. And then it's, what do we define as an access?
I might have to find this again, 'cause you know, I did this like three years ago.
It didn't, we didn't change it again, did we?
No.
Since then? Because we've had some minor things, right?
Correct.
But I don't remember access, it would be in...
We hadn't done. When a permit is sought for the reconstruction, rehabilitation, expansion of an existing site use or change of use for any other structure... When a permit is sought for the reconstruction, rehabilitation, or expansion of an existing site use or change of use for any lotter structure, all of the existing and proposed driveway approaches and parking facilities shall be brought, be brought into compliance with all design standards of the ordinance. So that's, I guess, if somebody new is building something or changing something on their property, though.
These driveways don't have setback requirements.
Okay, it says ten or two.
Ten, it's on page ten dash four, number ten at the top. So if you're going to reconstruct, rehabilitate, or expand on existing use, change of use for any lotter structure, all of the existing and proposed driveway approaches and parking facilities shall be brought into compliance with all design standards of this ordinance. Again, you have a bunch of them, so, if you're gonna leave them, that's, you know, that's fine, and in some cases, if you're on a major road, I understand wanting.
Yeah.
Away and out.
Yep.
I truly do.
Well, okay, so, um, years ago, I tried to talk, uh, um, Don Cordy into putting, actually I tried to talk Laura Cordy into putting a second drive on the Fulton Street. And she said, "I'm not gonna do it." And so, well, you'd have to knock down a house, but you got the house knocked down, and ready to alleviate congestion on Main Street, and she said, "We should've talked to my dad, my dad wanted to do it, but the planning commission said that he couldn't do it." And that would've been this ordinance. And when the, uh, when Becky here came in, they wanted to do that, and I asked them before they came into the planning commission, um, and we were talking, uh, that I'd like to see them do that, and they said they'd really like to do that. And it did alleviate congestion by allowing them to do that. So, that in essence isn't, was a really, I, in my opinion, was a good move.
Oh, I think so, too, that makes that so much more accessible.
Yeah, so.
But it puts three accesses on that site.
Yeah, so that's, that's the thing about two driveways, which could say there can't be one, there can only be one, but there's an instance where two is very.
He's got three.
He's got three.
Three?
Yeah.
Well, he's got an in.
Two, one, and three, and one.
Okay.
You know, you know, and then.
Well, throwing in and out.
It's like one, that's, I don't know, I kinda can see what is one. One in. They say only way.
Yeah. Even though people kinda go out the in and in.
Right.
It is our meeting. Okay.
But the question that remained is, is what's the, what, as you said there, and is there, is there a time when it isn't beneficial?
I'm sure there is, yeah.
No.
If it's too close to the corner, blah, 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 but, you know, if you have,
Oh, yeah.
With, with our ordinance, you can have an accessory outbuilding. But if you have an accessory outbuilding, you have a large corner lot, so you have a garage next to your house, and you have an outbuilding over here where you have your antique car, you should have two driveways.
That I've seen.
Yes, yeah.
And again, that's just, that's still not a disadvantage to us in terms of planning or.
Specifying which space you have.
Certain things are justified, right.
And, but again, and then too, and this now done from a code perspective, then the distances from corner, things like that play in outside of this, so.
It, it'd be tough to write, but that's where you kinda go back to the planner and say, "Okay, so what do we do here?" Right?
Good.
What's so wrong about having two access, I think?
What's that?
What's so wrong about having two access?
I don't really see anything myself unless they're, they're close together and they're, um, it's, it's confusing to traffic, other than that, I don't see a real reason, you know.
Becky, did you have one, or are you saying?
Well, a lot of people might say that it's, um, they don't want a bunch of concrete, that you've taken out a bunch of, you know, the green area, then if you're, you know, that's one less area for green than it is.
Okay.
I'm.
So they're landscaping it?
But.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, but.
I'll bet you that will be the planner's answer when you say, "Why, you know, three hundred feet, why not have, you know, why need three hundred feet, do more than one?" Amy's, must always say, "Could you want a concrete jungle?"
I don't think I made it in, in, in the concrete jungle.
In Chicago.
No.
I like Chicago.
Okay, so now we're.
Um, the next one we already fixed.
Did we?
With the sign ordinance that.
Okay.
Fixed.
Oh, okay, the administrative review.
Yeah.
We talked about that one to the, to death, so that really.
We changed that one, or is that one never, that stopped?
It didn't get put in the print.
It did not get put in, yeah, I remember that now.
Yeah.
It was fixed.
That's the way we're supposed to be, but.
Yes.
The print, yeah.
It did make the final publication.
No. Uh-uh.
Didn't make the cut.
See, but Dennis, Dennis intercepted that.
Yeah.
At the print.
So then there was, the next thing was on special approval for uses, special planning, this granted condition. I was like, yeah, I agree with that, so, um, so that, she's saying that the, uh, the positioner needs to continue to abide by the uses, uh, set for it, and a possible review after a year. Um, we could do that, 'cause when you do a special approval land use, uh, if you don't say anything, it's transferable. If you say that it is not transferable, it is not transferable. So you could set those, uh, guidelines in the approval, but you'd have, you'd wanna have it set in the ordinance, as Becky stating, and set it in their approval. So, you'd have, you'd have to specify it. So, and we have had instances, uh, and I think we're experiencing another one, but, uh, where there is not continued, uh, abiding of the conditions. But the planning commission, even if you put it in your, the planning commission has no teeth, so it would go to the building inspector to enforce.
But they'd know what to expect.
Yes.
Then there'd be no questions, then they'd, there'd be no question, here's the rules that you have to look at.
There'd still be questions.
Well.
There should be questions.
Right. Um, but we still have to take care of the fact that the interpretation of the S A U already is different than what we thought it was.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Um, so the next one, uh, so it says signs, and then possible definition at the back on the ordinance. I think we should, when we redo this, we should, I've never done that, we never looked at the definition, but we should.
Absolutely.
So, um, the definitions are back there, but, um, sometimes you look for a definition and it's not there. Um, so it should be, uh, expanded on.
But, and Becky, you're saying you wanna move the location of them?
Well, leave it under definitions, but we're, like, take this, take, if you go to the definitions where it says signs, put that in the very front of the sign ordinance. Definition of sign is, and repeat this word.
Well, right there in front of it.
So that, so that one, somebody's getting the sign put in, and the sign company calls and says, "Well, I looked at your ordinance," and it doesn't say anything about that, while they did look to the back of the ordinance for the definition to see that it applied to their base as well, kinda thing. Where if it's right there in their face, there's no question about it.
Like that nice line, yeah.
Yeah.
There are.
Answered some questions before their question.
Yep.
I mean, at some point, is, is the point is that just get rid of that whole, and put all the definitions in the appropriate section.
Right, in the, right. Only reason I don't say that is because there are several spots that things are referred to more than once throughout there, so you, you still need to have a general spot.
Well, or, or may the referer go to, you know, nine, two, three every time, so. It's okay either way, so, but I like that, you're right, and especially those that have specific, that, you know, like a sign, or a, or whatever, you know, that, that is one that, yep, I see that one, I agree.
Accessory structure would probably be another one.
Yeah. Yeah, especially when, 'cause that one gets from one section, refers to another section anyways, so. Yeah, I can see you getting lost to that. And we still have people, we have, this is posted online, right, the, the ordinance is online, right? Yeah, so especially then.
'Cause it's great for me, I can tell them what they wanna look for, you know, so.
Okay, so the next one is home occupation can be approved by administrative review. So, it can be, but it doesn't mean it has to be, so I think it's a bit simple, 'cause it's pretty much a guideline, uh, on what can, a home occupation can be, it says that there cannot, there can't be any employees, you can only do this, and this, and this, and this. So if everything kinda meets that guideline, then I don't see why, 'cause there's not really too much in a home occupation, so they still would have to fill out the application, pay the twenty-five or fifty dollar fee, whatever that is. But if there's anything that isn't black and white, then I, then I would agree, then it should come. But everything that the planning commission can do as an executive thing is discretionary, so it doesn't mean that they can do everything. It just means, if it's simple, they could do it, if it's not simple, I, I agree with Becky, it should come to the planning commission.
Okay. So everybody kinda agree with that one? So Becky, is there anything in six two oh four that jumped out at you then?
Six two oh four.
Well, yeah, 'cause it's, the section says, is establishment of home occupation specifically listed as a permitted use in section six two oh four of this ordinance.
Yeah, no, no, and that's just the whole, whole occupation.
Yeah, was there, was there an occupation or something that?
No, no, nothing in, nothing in particular. It just, I, I, I understand the administrative review when you're going from pizza joint to pizza joint. And I, and I see Ben's point, it's, most of the home occupations are pretty easy, it's an accountant or a, you know, something simple with no traffic, no volume of business. Just what I get in the office is, it's a way of skirting around, everybody knowing about it, that's all.
I mean, well.
I think if you made everybody come in, nobody would come in.
And I don't disagree on that either, I don't disagree there either.
No, and then on top of this, there's any home occupation not specifically listed may be permitted as a special approval use.
Correct.
So we have, we have prohibited uses, we got the S A L U, and then you've got this, the permitted, you know.
I agree, though, when they're permitted and there's no anything extraordinary about it, put it on the fast track.
Yeah. Some gal does nails at home, I mean, so what, okay?
Right.
Doesn't have the employees, got no deliveries other than UPS.
Until you grow, that what Julie Ben does is.
Well, you're still limited to only having so many customers, twenty cars per week.
Certain hours.
Did I miss what that said?
Yeah, that, that's, that's stated, the twenty cars per week.
And to grow, we don't always have to have no, more employees, and that's part of the situation, it's not limited, just themselves and employees.
Six two oh four.
Okay, so, this was a good get your feet wet thing, so, what do you guys wanna do? You wanna, um, let it go? Are we gonna do something with this? If we do something with this, my opinion is, we should, uh, be diligent and go through the ordinance book, chapter by chapter.
I agree.
Make notes.
I agree.
And do the whole thing. And then when we do this, we need a new book, and we need a new disc. So it needs to all be written, and again, if we just hodgepodge and do a little bit, it'll be like a signed ordinance, which isn't in the book, but it's an amendment to the book, so it's a slip in, um, so, what do you wanna do? And if we do this, I'd say it's probably gonna take us two years, um, being at the pace we're probably gonna work at, but we're also gonna need the patient council for some money. So, everybody has to be, um, dedicated to do this, 'cause it does mean some homework.
Needs to be done.
Have you been kept rolling over the same budget like the last few years for this, or did it just eventually, it just went away?
They're asking me that one.
That was the same.
You guys recovered the training, but not.
Yeah, we.
So if we, if we did something like this, um, I'd have to go in for money. 'Cause we get a little, I get a little money for training, but I don't, don't use it, so then they, they take it out, and I get a little bit less, and a little bit less, and.
So.
But I think we could, we could give spin's council to do this.
So how many sessions do we think we wanna talk, 'cause one of the other issues or challenges we have is when we've talked about doing it, or started, then we run into the groupings of where we go two, three, you know, months, in a, in a chunk here where we don't have meetings.
Exactly, well, if we start this, we're gonna have a meeting every month. And we may have an extra meeting every month, or a month, so, I would say that, um, there's, and there are about twenty sections, twenty-five sections, including definitions.
Correct.
So, uh, if you figured that and you did one every month, that's two years. So, you're just mandatorily gonna do at least one a month, sometimes you could do two, uh, but, uh, if we did that, 'cause you'd have to do more than one a month to get it done in two, two years.
Or you wanna break that elephant down into chunks and say, "Here's the list first," and then just do, and then, like you said, then over a two-year, you can do anything you want after that.
Nah, I, I.
These are pain points, you see, now, other sections haven't got there yet necessarily, but.
True, I don't think anything here on Becky's list, or, uh, the list with the industrial thing, is gonna be that major that we can't deal with it. I mean, that's my opinion, but you guys can have a different opinion, I don't care, whatever you guys decide that you wanna do. You wanna do the list first?
No, I think it's better to say, "Let's do articles one and two." Everybody read those before the next month, make notes on it, see what you.
We started that once.
Yeah, but let's follow through, and then make notes, and say, "This is a discrepancy, this I agree with," or "This doesn't make any sense in today's day and age, why is this in here?" You know, because most of you guys aren't here, weren't here when most of this stuff was done, I mean, Chris and Ben maybe, so, you might not understand why it was that way, maybe there's a reason, and maybe there's a reason it doesn't apply anymore.
An answer to Christie's question, though, the big thing would be, we're gonna dedicate a meeting per month to this. So, um, before, we would start it, and then we would, we'd have kind of avoid not much, uh, not many, uh, things coming before us, but then you had two or three things where you had busy months, so you had no room, and then you kinda, you, you got out of the habit again, and then we kinda, you know, so, but if we say that we're gonna do this once a month, so then we're gonna have to go to council and say, "Okay, look, uh, we're gonna have more meetings per year than twelve."
Oh, yeah, eventually, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, once you start this, you're gonna have.
Yeah, but for this budget year, you'd be okay.
Maybe.
You know, for the next budget year, you'd have to get more money put in there, and hopefully, maybe even get it to the point to be ready to spend more money on it.
And going into the budget year, we'll, we'll talk about, we'll, we'll know what you're gonna need, and we'll just set it to the budget where it won't be coming back later to amend the budget or anything.
So we'll have to work with the planner, too, on some of this, so that we kinda have the planner, as we do sections, they do the section, we review the section. I don't wanna do the sections, get them all done, and then get them to the planner, and then you forgot what it was that you did, and then when you do your review,
Or why you did what you did.
You know, you, you missed it, you know, so, then, then we need to spend money with the planner all, all the way through. Um, so, uh, okay, for my thing, I'll, um, talk to council, I'll talk to the planner, get some numbers, uh, but the big thing is, does everybody wanna be dedicated to this and get this accomplished?
Yeah.
Shrek?
Sure.
Mike?
Yeah, I guess we'll give it a try, I think, like, if you say a section per month, and see how it goes, you know, I mean, if it takes us two months to do one section, then we're gonna have to extend that to you period, probably.
Well, I think that we need to be diligent, or, if, I'm, I'm being conservative by saying one section a month, I'm hoping that we can do one to two sections per month. Because if we do one to two, and you average the one and a half, or one and a quarter, then you've got enough for the planner, 'cause you're gonna review the planner's stuff, too.
Right.
Uh, and then we can get done in two years, there's no reason why we couldn't do an ordinance in two years. We should be able to do an ordinance in a year.
Yep. 'Cause you're really not reading any of the wheel on all these topics.
Right.
You're just defining them, and making them very clear, I think that's great.
Yeah, so it isn't just reading, it's reading, understanding, and figuring out what, where you want our made-in-to-be.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, in an apology to Mr. Smith, but I figured you.
That was he done.
Yeah. I'm, I'm putting you on the, uh, on the block here. So, the next thing is training, so, uh, Dale Smith, who was on planning for a period of time, uh, and Dale. So Dale Smith, who was on planning for a period of time, and Dale and I had conversations over the seat, the proposed senior complex. So Dale's background is, he's been a licensed appraiser for how many decades?
Twenty-five years.
Two and a half decades. So he said he was quite familiar with this process and, and things of this sort. So I asked him to come in and kind of, and he's done some checking on this, on the McVicker parcel. So I asked Dale if he could come in and give us a little presentation and kind of give us a little insight, so.
Yeah, you were basically referring to the lots and the sites, not the lots and sites and that kind of thing. The proposal that I've seen, and I know it's not a finalized anything, is the nature version of McVickers, it's the same thing. Now, I haven't seen the master deed or anything on the proposed Armada project.
We haven't either.
Yeah, nobody has, so the language is sure to be different, but I read the master deed, I read the condo certs, I actually read the whole thing twice. And I've, I've read master deeds and condo certs for twenty-five years, so. There's nothing, well, there are some things, I don't know how deep I wanna go into this tonight, but there are some things in there where the master deed and the condo certs don't match up. But typical language of the master deed is what they used. Matter of fact, I think they use the typical language so much that it doesn't correspond with the condo certs. This is a detached condo, from everything I can read about it, the owner of the property owns air. Nothing else, nothing but air. So the inside walls and everything in those inside walls is owned by the condo owner. Everything else is either owned by the HOA or it's a one-thirty-first ownership, split amongst all the people. Which I don't think that's the way it is, I think it's HOA's gonna own it all, but.
That's the way that I was led to believe. Chris, is that kind of what you thought too? I think when we talked about the park area, the park area was gonna be owned by the condo, so that would indicate that that.
That the whole thing is.
The whole thing.
See, when, when that master deed was written, they, they left flexibility in the, in there for the HOA to make changes to it. And they made some big changes, from what I read. Small changes are like mowing the grass, doing the sidewalks, shoveling the snow, that kind of thing, those are all small. Biggest thing they did is they took the outside of the condo away from the condo owner. From what I, from what I read now is the roof, the siding and everything else is HOA. It's, it's common elements, I should say.
Yeah, yeah, cause they were talking about something about in terms of payment for mandatory, let's say twenty-year, whatever the roof is gonna be replaced, whether.
Yeah, no replace it. See, so they took the building, they took the buildings, the exterior of the buildings away from the condo owners, which is neither bad or good, it's just what they can.
That's not uncommon though.
It's not uncommon.
You don't check other associations.
Detached, detached condos are not really common.
No, that's true.
Everybody likes site condos because you get around the plating, you know, builders love that, you know, it's cheaper and faster. Everybody likes attached condos because you got common walls, so builders, you know, save a lot of money by building them that way. I don't even know why detached condos exist, to be honest with you, there's not that many of them around. And also, I looked up fifty-five and older, cause there was some talk of that. And I found twelve in the state of Michigan. And other twelve that I found, only six actually have it in their bylaws that you have to be fifty-five. The other ones are more like a sales pitch. We're building this, we're, we're in mind of having fifty-five and older people and, you know, but we're not gonna put in our bylaws that you have to be fifty-five to live in there, you know, so there's like a half dozen of them.
But it can be done.
It can be done, yes, it's legal to do.
We can't do it as a planning commission, but it can be done in bylaws of the HOA.
That's correct, yeah, it can be, it's legal to do it, it just hasn't been done much. You go down to Florida and that's half of Florida, fifty-five and over places. The, the sites are about the same size as what's proposed here. They average about sixty-four hundred square feet. Typical width is forty-seven feet.
That's a lot width.
Lot width, frontage, I'm talking about frontage forty-seven feet. Now, they got, of course, they got pie shaped and they got odd shaped, so it's all over the place, but that's the average. Trying to think what else, what else you wanna know?
I got, I got the answer, or probably what I got.
So didn't, didn't you say that when Bruce Township did this? I don't know if it was you or one of the Fritz's told me that the planning commission passed it not even having an ordinance to facilitate the vehicle. So they had to write the ordinance after they passed it.
Yeah, I, I heard that, but they, they actually made the rules after the game was over, so. Plus that, that's such an odd complex, I don't know. I would definitely recommend, you know, if we're, if you're going ahead of this, go over McVickers, drive, just drive through it.
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah. McVickers, the houses are probably seventy-five percent narrow fronts. They range from about eleven hundred square feet to about fourteen hundred square feet. Yeah.
Are they sort of regular use proposed? He wants to start off, you know, with Brandon, Georgia's place, the ones we ever looked at it, that's the one that starts it. That's the small one.
There's, there's a couple over there, there's a couple. The odd thing about this, and I've done so many of these complexes, but the odd thing is, anytime I've seen one of these, they're consistent. So if you have fifty units, you have fifty narrow fronts. And whereas over there, all of a sudden, here's a seventeen-hundred-foot colonial, you know, it looks just totally out of place.
Yeah, he was going three sizes, I think, he was going up to two thousand square feet, wasn't he?
I don't remember that.
It was like twelve, let's say fourteen, eighteen.
He'd have a hard time squeezing it, well, he might be able to squeeze it on a pie.
He's got some of those pie shaped, exactly, cause he go loops around and gets into the eyebrow and the coat sack, there's a few.
Some of those pie shaped ones in Romeo, the frontage is only the width of the driveway.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Yeah, we couldn't allow that, that.
McVickers has got some.
But that is a good fact, you're right, I've never seen them, they don't have all the same.
Yeah.
I thought that was odd.
McVickers has got some thirty-foot frontage on some of the, like thirty-two feet or something like that. Let's see, what else?
So, okay, so in a general consensus, so this is getting to be more of a common thing or less common?
No, it's less common.
Less common.
It's less common, yeah, yeah.
So it's kind of seen as.
I don't, I don't know, well, there's two, two often north of Avenue that I've heard are under construction. I haven't seen the certs or anything on that front, it's like how they're gonna do it, it's like, you don't see it a lot, because there's really, there's no advantage. There are attached condos that aren't attached, basically is what they are. And so what if you got an eight-foot walkway between them? I mean, most of those, the new attached condos are ranch-style condos, they have garages in between them. So you're not gonna hear the guy next door purping or whatever he's doing. So you're really not gaining anything by having a eight-foot opening in them, I don't, I don't know why it exists, to be honest. Also, that road, that road to me looks like they're made a bike trail only wider. I mean, it doesn't look like a public road at all, you know.
You're talking about called McVicker?
At McVickers.
And that's what he's proposing.
Yeah, that's what he's proposing. I'm sure he wants to do a curb.
It's twenty-four to the outside of the curb.
That's the biggest he could go anyway, wasn't it, or could he go wider?
No, that's, no, that did, it's, that's four foot below our ordinance.
No, I understand it, but I'm saying, is that just because?
Because that's what he drew.
Okay, but he could go twenty-eight.
Well.
Was that gonna change everything?
Well, according to him, it's gonna change everything, right? But according to our planner, there's no way that this can go as it sits. So that, there's nothing in our ordinance for us to allow this. I've looked and looked and pulled straws and done all kinds of things and went out of this box into that box and into that box. So the last one was to move the eastern property line.
Right.
But in a recent conversation that I had with Mr. Fritz, we were looking for forty feet and to drop one lot. He told me that he dropped one lot, he dropped the project and he can only come up with fifteen feet.
You know, and, and McVickers, I'm pretty sure that like around lot five or six, there is an access, an opening in one of their lot, between two of their lots.
Well, he has a retention pond.
Yeah, to get back to the retention or retention.
Yeah, one of the.
Yeah, we don't know which, I don't. The pond, you know, so there is, it looks like an easement that goes through there. So he did allow for it there, so that people aren't locked out of getting back to the pond.
Right, and then in our case, he was, we were talking about one of the lot to get to the trail.
Right, yeah, it's actually gonna be between ten and eleven.
Is it ten and eleven?
Ten, eleven, sign of ten, whatever.
Also, one, one thing, and I don't know if this is anything planning cares about, all lots there are assessed the same. So if you, the biggest one, biggest lot there that I showed was eighty-five hundred square feet and the smallest was forty-eight, eighty. And they're all assessed at forty-five thousand. All the lots, the sites.
So then they just do total divided by?
Yeah, cause it's all common area. Matter of fact, my question has always been, I never got an answer. If I'm having a party and I live next door to you and you got that nice big pie-shaped lot and I've got a lot of people coming over, can I put a tent over there? You know, cause it's common, it's common area.
Yeah.
So when an assessor looks at it, they just look at it as a site, period, and what is a site worth? And the average is like forty-seven feet frontage, so they go thousand dollars a front foot and they're, you know, rounded down to forty-five thousand and that's how they do it.
So then each, each homeowner would assess at that?
Yeah, yeah, they're all, all assessed the same, forty-five thousand for a lot. Yeah, so it's, it seems like it's a ripoff, but since you don't own anything except airspace inside the unit, then everything else is common elements. What difference does it make, really? The only difference it's gonna make is the envelope to build on, that's the only difference it's gonna make. Cause you know, if you, if he's gonna go two thousand square foot colonial, he's gonna have to have the envelope for it, so. But other than that, it doesn't make any difference, as far as assessing those. And also, you know, the zoning thing here is, it's residential multifamily. Just about every single one I've ever done, it's residential multifamily, RM, or they use RM one or RM dash A or whatever.
And that, that's true, so I did ask Mr. Casey about rezoning this into a RM, cause right now it's R one A. Well, R one, cause it used to be R one A and R one B, but it's R one. So his question was, when Depot Street was supposed to expand, go down to there, that would have been no big deal. But to have a multiple off of a R one and into a non-collector street was questionable. So could it be done? Yes. There was something else that he, that Mr. Casey said that it was maybe a possibility, but it was redrawing the whole thing. So he kinda gave me something, did you see it?
So was the, what's the chain, why would you, what's RM? Okay, what's the, the benefit, why would you do it?
From community to community, it'll be different, every single one, you know, they'll say RM and then they'll say what it all means, but they consider that a condominium.
So it's a density?
Yeah.
So you, you could increase your density, that, that's really what it was. Cause the density doesn't go to our R one, so our density doesn't fit.
Doesn't fit the R one.
Yeah, it doesn't fit the R one. But you could, you could maybe fit it in the RM.
I was saying, cause it sounded like Romeo, you're saying the big figure, there are Bruce.
Yeah, Bruce Township.
That was, that was great, that was done after the fact anyway, so it's okay, so what do you wanna write to say?
Well.
What do you want, what do we want it to say and find, it's just a matter of time.
I heard there was some yelling and screaming over there.
Don't you already have an RM?
I bet.
There is already an RM zoning in Armada, right? Isn't like the apartments or something?
Yeah.
What am I looking for?
There's a site over by campground there by the golf course, those are detached condos, that's a detached.
What's the, what's the sub? Are the ones right on the golf course?
Yeah.
Those are site condos.
The one that's over there?
Yeah, they're not detached.
Well, but they're all.
They're not connected, but they're site condos, yeah.
So I think on your.
Site condos, you own the property, you own your site.
Okay.
Detached condos, all you own, well, it depends, I can vary, but in this case, airspace, it's all you own.
So there was something that Mr. Casey was gonna send to me, but if you look at the McKenna response, on page three, there's a picture. And that picture is a different layout than what Mr., what the pictures had, so, but it was similar to that. But I think he was doing what Mr. Smith had suggested, I think there's some attached condos, not just all detached. So I'm really not sure what was, he said he was gonna send me information, but I checked my email this afternoon and I haven't got it yet.
Now, if you, if you, I mean, if you wanna go a whole nine yards and zone that pub, then you could put attached, detached, and you wouldn't have to worry about both in the same thing.
Well, but then, I mean, we, we would do that as, as a, so you could do a plan development and still do a multiple of the plan. But with the plan development, we can't do it under the plan development, cause we're only allowed to deviate by ten percent. So we're seventy feet, seventy feet in eighty-four hundred, so you know, the seventy foot would only go down to sixty-three foot. And we're talking about forty-eight and a half foot and forty-eight hundred square feet or roughly that in eighty-four. And deviating from that would only be seventy-six, right?
Yeah, this, this can deviate all over, I would think.
No, I mean, yeah, in the roads, I mean, there's, there's just a whole, there's a whole lot, so.
Now, does, I, I can't remember, I know you showed me, but I can't remember, does this have sidewalks on both sides of the road or just on one side?
The, it has sidewalks on both sides, I believe, but I think, what did McVicker have? Didn't McVicker have, they only had one side, is that what it was?
Yeah.
So it was one side, but there was grass in between sidewalk and, and he's proposing that there's no grass.
McVicker has the sidewalks right up at the curb.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So the sidewalk's on there.
Yeah, the grass is right up to the curb on both sides.
And, and I, I don't like that at all. I, I, my house is one of the few houses in Armada where there is no, I, I've got no grass from the street to my sidewalk. And it's, I use a snow blower and I clean my sidewalk, the snowplow comes back, my sidewalk is full again. You need that, you need that area, you know, for the snow to go from the snowplow, because you're under ordinance, you gotta keep sidewalk clean. Well, how can I keep my sidewalk clean? I have to follow the snowplow truck around.
And it's dangerous, you know, somebody's walking a little kid or something, a little kid gets off the curb in the street.
Yeah, and it's, 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 it's not good, so that, that wasn't gonna fly. But still, it, it really boils down to, you know, getting the project to fit and not all the little dot and i's and cross and the t's. It was whether or not we could fit the project in the scope of our ordinance. So we would have to create a new ordinance to make this fit.
Which is not a huge deal, they do in other communities.
True, it is, but if you look at this and you look at the size of the houses and if you go over to McVicker and you look at that subdivision, and you kinda think about what you're doing, you're creating a very small parcel on a very small house. And if we do, if we do a plan development, we can dictate a whole lot as to not just the size of the house, but actually the construction of the outside of the house as. but actually the construction of the outside of the house, as, i.e. materials, whether it's brick versus vinyl, um, whether it's this versus that. Um, so, you can do a whole lot with the plan development, but the McVicker thing is mainly all siding. And my fear is, you're gonna create low-income housing. So it all is being sold as fifty-five and over, but as Mr. Smith said, very few people have that, and it's really mainly just a sales ploy. And if we did it, it would have to be in the HOA agreement, but you want low-income housing? If you were to create an ordinance to make this, you've created an ordinance to allow low-income housing.
Well, uh, that, what that, what that housing is, it's starting at the bottom of phase three and going down. That's exactly what that housing is. You start at the lowest denominator in phase three, look at those houses, and it works from there down. They actually have almost the same exact models as some of, as some of the little ones.
Phase three?
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't looked at McVicker, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, the one on Main Street and, and Madison.
Right, the quarters.
Seventeen hundred square feet. That house in McVickers is eleven hundred and fifty square feet. So, and that kinda tells you the difference. Not only that, there's, there is houses that are wood-sided, like plywood-sided. It's not like slats. You know, they have big chunks of, it looks like plywood, they may paint it over, so. I mean, it's not the standard that you think of when you think of like phase three, or phase two, whatever in there, it's not. That's why I say I recommend you just drive through it. Not only that, it feels like a funnel, you get off of, uh, McVicker, you go down this road, you feel like you're getting funneled right in, because the roads are narrow, everything is tight together. You know, there's these gaps between the houses, and just like this, you know? And, uh, it, it's, it's nothing like we have here in the village, it's really not.
No.
It's really not. You know, and whatever Armada wants to do, it's fine, but, um, just drive McVickers and see what you think. If you like it, then you like it, you know, so. But it isn't where I'm going.
I think a lot of people like the idea, um, but it's kind of, what can we do to make it fit? And what's it gonna look like when we get done?
Can we dictate to him that he would use, I mean, it'd be a vinyl in phase three, and I don't think that looks like the ghetto, so you gotta be careful what your words are.
Well, not exactly, because there's not a hundred percent vinyl in phase three. No, but there's a lot of vinyl, my house is.
There is some, there is some brick.
This house is.
McVicker, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is this a ghetto house?
Yeah. No, I'm not saying it's a ghetto house, I'm just saying that they start at the bottom of phase three and go down, and they do.
You, you have to, you have to let McVicker look at it.
Yeah.
Because he's told us many times that that was what he was gonna model this idea.
Right, yeah. There, there is design and appeal, you know?
Yeah.
And if design and appeal, you can have two houses, and design and appeal is totally different between the two, even if they're all vinyl, you know? And you're gonna see that when you go over there. You'll see a difference in design and appeal. And the reason is, is because he wants to build houses for a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Well, if you do that, you gotta build small, and you gotta build plain.
Right.
I mean, that's what you gotta do. And if that's what Armada wants, then, then that's what Armada gets, but. And it is, I like, I like condos. The older I get, the more I like it, you know? I don't wanna mow the lawns and do all that stuff, I just wanna drink a beer and sit on the back porch, but, you know, I, I, I don't think I'd like that, you know, from what I've seen, unless this is way different than what I'm seeing at McVickers. But that's just my personal, that's just the peanut gallery, right?
Yeah, and then also too, you've got some other future considerations to think of, you know, on top of it. So if that one goes, then you've got the old apartments, and then with the old Kraus, uh, well, Kay's property, that was gonna be behind it, you know, they wanted to redo the apartment, add on, and then build condos behind it, then you've got, you know, if anything, whatever happened with, like, the example to the south, which that's, that was gonna be, that's.
We have a hundred acres that could be developed.
Hundred, yeah, so, so again, I mean, there's, to start that for a precedent, as you're saying, I get, and I'm with you there too, I, yeah, if, unfortunately, if it may not meet all of Jeff's expectations, but at the same point, use the toolkit we've got and don't destroy it, you know? There's, obviously with the P, you know, there's, there's trade, now the idea was, is we're gonna give you concessions for open space and this, so that you, these other parts of the ordinance can be deviated from. But it's a negotiation, it's documented and whatnot, and you're right, performance standards, things like that for, or should I say, design standards or whatnot? Yeah, that's, you know, again, we're, that's a given, you wanna do this, we, we need to see this, it's, uh, you know, for the character and the, and the value and whatever for the village, this is, it's, it's in our best interest to do that, so. So I'm, I'm with you there, that's why I was, I'm glad I read that last, right, because we were starting, here to see, is, okay, this is an interesting twist, I didn't expect it to go that way.
Well, and, and I'm glad you brought up the open space, because, and the trade-offs, because with this plan development, you're supposed to have the higher density, allow the higher density, but you need open space. We've got the higher density and no open space.
Right.
So there is, there, there's, there's, to, for a trade-off, there has to, the trade is, this guy trading this for this, this one is all, is all one side.
It's all one side, yeah.
It's all one side.
Yeah, another, another thing, and regardless, probably gonna deal with it, but Armada's never dealt with an HOA, have they?
No, we have not, though it would be, it'd, it'd be very costly for us to do this, as far as, uh, a learning experience. So, it would be, uh, and that's, that's way past where we are today, so that's the, you know, we've approved the lots, we've approved the, the parcel, the, uh, the engineers are done, the planner's done, uh, with the, with the site, and, um, we've got footprints of the houses and stuff, so now you work on the HOA. So the HOA is a whole different, uh, ballgame, because now it's like, who handles the lighting? Who handles the street? Who handles, uh, uh, the underground and utilities? All those things go in the HOA, so then, then, not only, then you have, then you can have the fifty-five and older community, but, uh, then you also have to make sure that the HOA is funded, so that the HOA can, um, handle twenty years later, uh, a repair of a street, or some, uh, a water main breakage or something. Who handles all this stuff? So all that's written into the HOA agreement, so I don't think anybody here is qualified, except Mr. Smith, to actually understand an HOA.
Right.
Uh, so, um.
I, I read their, I read their statement, that was sad. They've changed that, obviously, I don't know how old those condo certs are, but they couldn't survive with, uh, what they did there, because they're basically breaking even with what they were taking in, what they were paying out. And the thing is, it's still really, relatively new, they're, those were built ninety-six, ninety-seven, right around that time.
Twenty years old.
Yeah, so if, if they got the whole enchilada, that's the siding, that's the roof, that's the windows, that's everything, you know, sidewalk, street, everything, that's a lot of money. Right now, they're, they're only charged seventy-five dollars a month, that's what their association fee, yeah, they can't, they can't get there.
Yeah, that's, no, they won't make you say.
Not a match. I don't know, but, I, I know that Fritz has kinda threw under number what they wanted to charge, I don't remember what that was, did he?
It seemed it was higher than seventy-five.
Oh, yeah.
What was that?
It was quite a bit higher than seventy-five, but I don't remember the exact amount, but.
But all those things you have to have, you know, you have to have an engineer come up and say, okay, you know, this is what we, in twenty years or thirty years, what we think they need, what they need to have in the bank, and what it's gonna take to get there, because if they're gonna cut the grass, they're gonna plow the snow, um, uh, those kind of things.
Yeah, once, once a change step been to, we got the outside of your building, and the HOA did that, then what cost to, to doing that just went through, literally, through the roof, you know, and.
Well, I was at a friend's house on Saturday, and his, he's in HOA, and his is just like that.
Yeah.
So they, the only thing he does is inside the house.
Yeah.
That's all, I'm honest with you, I think her, I think her fees are about two hundred a month.
That, that makes more sense, if it's set up that way, that makes more sense, two hundred bucks a month.
Yeah, and that's still pretty reasonable today, see?
Yeah, but if you, if you go through, if you go through MRSs and look at, uh, association fees, they'll go anywhere from like fifty-five or sixty bucks a month, to three hundred dollars a month. And a lot of that is because what are they doing, you know?
Right.
If, if, if the whole shell is yours, and not theirs, then the association fees are gonna be a lot lower.
Much, right, sure. Right, but if in this case, I think, you know, if that was only seventy-five, you'd collect a twenty-eight grand a year.
Yeah.
So how many streets and roofs and whatnot, twenty years to how you're gonna do on that much?
Well, as I said, you're built in ninety-six, ninety-seven, so another five, ten years, you're gonna start replacing it.
But you're taking, you're taking the grass mowing off, you're taking the, uh, the landscape, the, any type of landscaping off? You're taking the, the, the snow plowing off?
Yeah.
Did they have, did you have warming, right, or?
Yeah, that's all in there, it's a private road.
I hope that you're not gonna take any minor fix.
Private and maintain, snow plowing, all that.
That's your, that's your saving account, so.
Yeah.
You just gotta make sure that there is a saving account.
Sounds like you're hedging, you're hedging, I feel like that.
Yeah, because they, they changed things, you know, that, that was a couple things, well, actually, in the master deed in that, in that complex in McVickers, they had it that you, the owner of the condo had to maintain his site. Well, that's common area, you shouldn't, no one should ever ask you to maintain common area.
Right.
But that was how Fritz had it, nothing in the master deed. Well, as soon as the homeowner's associating, associating got a hold of it, that one right out the window, now they. Yeah, they, they mowed the whole thing at once, you know?
Sure.
But at least, we won't have wells.
No, and, and I don't know how they did that, because every one of those houses had a well.
Yeah, punching holes every twenty-five feet or something.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's even more, if, if the point being was, tell two, is that if, regardless of what gets put in, and just that, that the HOA can do their own thing on top of it, and they just override everything that you put out in the first place.
I think, well, I think, you'd, you'd have to write it into the HOA that the HOA could be changed, but it could only be changed in conjunction with approval by the village.
I don't know, I've never seen it that way. I've never seen it, these people are, these people are Gestapo's, and, and they do their thing.
The only way you could write that is, you'd have to, you'd have to have some, or some things that could not be changed.
Yeah, well, basically, you know, in all fairness, number one is not a ghetto. Number two, they're the best neighbors you can have, there's no doubt about it. You, you live next to a condo with a, a good homeowners association, they're the best neighbors in the world.
Right.
They, you know, they'll find you, if, if you're walking a dog and it poops and you don't pick it up right when it poops, can I see poop on camera?
I'm gonna tell Sherry you said that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you gotta have, you're, they don't, you can't park motorcycles in driveways, you can't have ATVs, you can't have more than two dogs, if your dog's barking all the time, you're gonna get fined. I mean, they're the best neighbors you can have, you know? It's like living next to Mr. Wilson on Dennis the Menace, you know, it's the best neighbor you can possibly have, in that regard. But the thing is, is like, they're not, they want a lot of fences and sheds, and this, and that, and this, and that, and this, and that, and if, if you don't like all those rules, then stay out of there, you know? And HOA does that, and I don't think the village has any say in that. You know, they might have a say in something that they have, that they're not allowed to have.
Well, the HOA, the, the developer and the municipality create the HOA together.
Yeah, but once you, once you elect your board, you can change any rules you want, yeah, it's fair game. All, all you have to do is vote, you know, that's all you gotta do. Uh, Joe Schmo doesn't like the fact that his neighbors got three dogs, he goes to the HOA, files a complaint, never did, but.
Well, you can, you can write some of those things into it, so all the HOA rules would have to buy by village, uh, would have to buy by, first buy by village rules. So they'd have to have, make sure that they, uh, kept this nest egg going for future repairs, so they couldn't spend all the money. So some of those things could be written into, so they could change a lot of things, but they couldn't change anything that would affect their ability to fund future repairs. That's kinda, uh, I, I worked with the DPW supervisor in Rochester, we had occasion to do something over there. Seventy-five percent of Rochester is HOAs. So, I got a pretty good education from him on what to look for. I mean, some of the HOAs, uh, um, even take care of their own lighting, their own street lighting.
Yeah, these do.
You could also say that your HOA can't change without ninety-five percent of, um, approval by your members. You, you'll never get ninety-five percent of your members.
It's fifty-one percent.
It can, you can, mine's seventy-five, you're making anything.
And McVickers is fifty-one percent.
So you could say ninety-five percent of your, of your, um, whatever you say, however you say it, for your size, not just who shows up, ninety-five percent of your.
Yeah, but normally, they, they don't like tying their own hands, so, you know.
But we can tie their hands.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that's created before they ever sold one.
Yeah, before they get their final approval.
Yeah, that, that's what we're trying to say, so, I mean, yeah, they could change stuff, but you can write it in that they can't change certain things.
The thing, the thing is with the HOAs, that any HOA I've ever seen, and the HOAs you're talking about are different, because they're single-family residential, they have HOAs to maintain entrances, and maybe Christmas lights up in the winter time, and that kinda thing. This is a lot more extensive than that, they make the rules.
Right.
But the rules are always, that I've ever seen.
More restrictive.
More restrictive, exactly, more restrictive than what the.
Than what the village is gonna say.
Yeah, because we don't say you can't have a fence in Armada, but they'll, they do in McVickers, you can't have a fence.
Yeah.
We don't say you can't have a shed in Armada, but they do, you can't have a shed. So, I, I don't think they're gonna collide, I don't think there's gonna be anything like that.
McVickers has colors that you can't.
Yes, yes, oh, yeah, they was there, yeah, they could tell you.
Yeah, what, what paint you can use on the exterior.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta fill out a form if you want your trim painted.
Right.
You know, they come out, paint your trim for you.
Right.
Yeah, my buddy moved into his house, wanted to change the two lights on his, that, on his garage wall, and he went to the HOA board and asked if he could change the lights, and they said, really, you wanna change the lights? Well, yes. They said, well, do you have a design in mind? And he said, yeah, and he said, and he said, well, let us see it, oh, we like this one, how about you go and research, uh, a few more and come back next time? So he did, and he said, uh, so what do you like? So, oh, I think, well, you're gonna like this one, go with this one. And he said, well, how come you let this go so easy? Because we've already had six other people out of thirty-two wanted to do this, and now you're elected to go get all the lights and put them on on all the graces.
Yeah, go ahead, try to put a satellite dish or something on top of your house, you know, see what happens. I don't, I don't know what to do, I think it's very imprisoning in those places. Don't put an antenna up, or light pole, oh, no, 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 no.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
That's pretty restrictive.
Yeah, that's pretty much what we're gonna run into here, I think.
Okay, so then, what do you wanna do? I mean, uh, where to, uh, um, there's only one more avenue from Brian Casey. Has everybody read the replies from, uh, McKenna and Rowe?
Charlie?
Let's do that, I haven't, um, I think I got word for word all the way through.
Okay, well, anyway, uh, so read those, we're not gonna take time to read both of those this evening, because there's about fifteen pages between the two of them. So there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of problems with the development, um, but the, kind of, do we wanna work on this, or we wanna just tell them that it's a little too far out of our realm?
Who are we telling? Are we trying to tell Fritz?
Yeah.
Let them know the findings here?
No, they already know the findings. If, if, what, what, I'm asking this board, I already know what McKenna and Rowe have said.
Right, I mean, but he, but Norm and Jeff both have seen.
No, they, they have that.
They didn't see this?
Yeah.
And did you get any response from them?
No, I'm not asking for their response, I'm asking.
I know, it's our response, it's gonna be, is whether, yeah, do you agree with the pursuit, proceeding that with, with? Anyway, we're saying that for you, you know?
Well, I'm, no, I'm not saying any of those, I'm saying, so, after this, and I guess I'm asking you to make a decision before you've read the response, I would hope that you would have read these before you came to the meeting, and that should be the case, uh, to come to a meeting prepared, and that is reading all the information that you get. So, once we. So, once we do the, start the zoning ordinance, you're gonna have to do that, that's, otherwise it's just not gonna work. So anyway, do we wanna work on this project? If so, um, there's a lot of stumbling blocks, once you kinda read this stuff, then do you wanna create an ordinance just to fit this? Cause that's the only way we're gonna do it. Once you read these, there's no, there's no vehicle in our ordinance to allow this.
So Brian's plan to develop, don't act on it until.
So there was something that he said, but it would not allow this density.
Oh, no, I got it, that, that's right, I mean, I'm, and I would, that's saying is, Brian's proposal of, with those conditions, yeah, that's, then, as I said, does he know that we're gonna, that was my point, are you gonna, we're sticking to our guns with regarding those conditions, those four or five around the last page? And if this is gonna work, we have a mechanism, but the mechanism will only work if these go along with it.
Okay, so I guess that was, okay, so that's one answer, the answer that I got, or the question I got, is do we work on this, or do we throw this away? Because what you're saying is we're going by what Brian's saying, and this is.
And they throw it out.
Yeah, that would work.
Okay, so that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
So, do we work with this one and continue to try, or at least?
I don't know how we, based on everything between these two things now, and there's more meat than, than the last response.
Yep.
Than these two now, I don't know how to make that, and then when the, when the planner, I mean, when the engineer says, hey, if you just did this, you could avoid, you know, I, for nine hundred and forty feet of this, you can avoid nine hundred and eighty feet of that. Okay, I, I'm not visualizing that yet, but if you say so, then yes, we can, there's things we can do with them. Other than that, though, what we're doing is bandage after bandage after bandage on the whole thing.
Correct, or you're creating a whole new ordinance, so that's.
Exactly, and I'm saying with all, I even forgot about, remember when, when Charis was, with his annexation, that was gonna be six, ten, whatever, oh god, now twelve years ago probably, and that parcel, there's a whole bunch of other area that, when you do this, that sets the tone for all the others.
Yeah, that, that's my care.
So I, I'm with you there.
Christie?
I, I feel the same way, this just doesn't work, if you're going by what McKenna said to us.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
As far as I'm concerned, if you got a zoning law, you should stick to it, period.
Well, it's not, and not the zoning law, it's.
It is, it's a minimum width of seventy feet, proposed is forty-eight-five, no, that doesn't fit.
Understood, so again, the question really isn't, do you stick with it, the question that I'm trying to hit to is, do we create a new one?
No.
Okay, so Mike?
I guess, I feel, I understand what, what everybody's saying, I just, in the back room, I just keep thinking that we know that we need revenue for the bills, and we're not, it's not happening.
Well, doesn't it mean that nothing will happen here?
Well, I think it'll, I pretty much, if you tell Fritz that we're, we're not gonna accept his proposal, I could almost guarantee you ninety-nine point five percent, he's gonna say, okay, forget it.
Well, and that's exactly what's gonna happen, so then you'll, then you'll go to single-family houses and build eight or nine houses, or whatever would fit in that, that area. So it's not really, cause he's pretty much told me that, so he either gets this, or he's just gonna go back to our regular ordinance, which was kinda what Chris said, you know, and that's what the planner has said, this is our, this is what we can do. So it is not all or nothing, it's either this, or he's just gonna step back.
And there is a third, but he doesn't wanna consider that one, that one's a lot more work.
Yeah, so there is, there, and there is one more option, that, uh, Brian, uh, Keesey from McKenna was gonna send me, but again, that was a, a totally different design, it would cost a lot more, it would cost more engineering, and I think it was a low, it was a lower density than this. And from what I understand, the big thing was the lift station costing a bunch of money.
Right.
With the lift station, he had to have this much, I don't really believe so much that he couldn't increase the size, the, the amount of the sale of his house. Um, for some reason, he's, he's adamant that he can't, um, between multiple conversations that I had with the, with the planner, um, and we've talked about it here on this board, uh, we were pretty, all, pretty adamant, uh, in my opinion, that we wanted an access to the trail.
Right.
And that was another thing, he, he didn't, he didn't wanna give up a house for that, and he saw no benefit in that, that kinda like, I see a whole lot of benefits.
And then figure we can squeeze it in between lots anyways, so.
Well, we, we were gonna.
Push it to the shop, right.
We were gonna cut down one lot.
Right.
So it's gonna go from thirty-one to thirty, uh, that's in, increasing that, uh, boundary to the east, forty foot, we're gonna get to about fifty-eight and a half foot of lot frontage on the east to west lots, it wasn't gonna do anything to the north to south lots, but it would have been, uh, um, would have been almost half of the, the, um, uh, increase of half the lots, you know? Brian said, okay, well, that, that's gonna make a big deal, uh, we had to do something with the cul-de-sacs because of the low frontage, um, but when I scaled the drawing, it came out to only be about sixty-eight feet, um, but Jeff told me it was actually ninety-two foot, so I don't know exactly what was right.
So you are saying you think you will still develop that, that if this doesn't go through, he's going to put in single-house residential?
I think then he doesn't have to do the lift station.
Right.
Yeah, cause it's not, it's not the density.
Right. But you're, as far as you know the knowledge, you have to talk to him, you think he would still, still build something back there?
Well, that's, whether, whether it does or not, that's what he said, but, uh, there's nothing saying that he's actually gonna do this.
Well, I think, I don't think he proposed it, but if he didn't think he was gonna do it.
Well.
You know, I mean, you kinda talk with circles.
No, not really, Mike, you're talking, it's dollars and cents, and you start with one thing, you start with a proposal, the price escalates, the price escalates, the price escalates, and there's a point where you say, it can't go any further. So just cause you did the proposal, doesn't mean that you're gonna do the project, so it's a, it's a, uh, in a business standpoint, sure, this is, this is thought of, and it's definitely, uh, you know, a good proposal, whether or not it, when all the things are said and done, if it's feasible, you pull the trigger, if it's not feasible, you back off. So it doesn't mean that you don't have to invest money before that.
Well, and that's one of the, you know, I was gonna ask you again, and then we, we looked at that when we were doing the master plan update even, I remember them talking about it with phase three, um, the, the, the sell price is to make it doable, and, you know, and I did the same thing, talking to Blake on theirs, it's, it's a, I mean, we're a tough, tough nut to crack up to make it, you don't get the right affordability to get people coming in the first place.
Right.
I don't know that, no, no, again, this is just pink gallery, I don't know that Armada's a very good place for fifty-five and over anyway. I mean, it's a nice town, it's quiet, it's everything, but our taxes are high, our water and sewer is high.
Right.
Most fifty-five and overs are a lot of my unfixed incomes. This is not a cheap place to live, the housing is reasonable, reasonably priced, housing.
But that, it's offset by, that's why they're pricing on the housing.
So you can only afford so much.
Right.
So if it, if it's, if it's going in the taxes and water, it's not going in the house, you know, it's not going into the house, so. My guess is that he would never make, make it mandatory that it was fifty-five and over. That would be hanging himself, in a little town like this, it would be hard for him to sell everything. Now, if he dropped that, and he put houses in for a hundred and eighty-five thousand, twelve hundred square foot, narrow fronts, plain, not, not a slum, plain, you know, and small, and not a lot of doodads and stuff like that, then he probably could sell, especially right now, if they were done right now, he could sell them.
Yeah.
You know, he could.
Yeah, the market is, is always short.
And he knows, he knows that.
Yeah.
But the thing, the thing is, and again, it's just a pink gallery, but it's down, it's down from phase three, we're moving this way, not this way. And, and I don't know, I, you know, and I said it before, I don't know what it is that people think we have to tie a bone around our neck to get the dog to play with us, you know, I think Armada's a great town, and I don't think we have to go down, you know, I just don't. Again, that's the pink gallery.
I respect your opinion, I agree, that makes a lot of sense.
But I, you know, the tax thing, yeah, I understand that, everybody, I think every town has that, you know, every town wants more housing so they have more income, I mean.
Yeah, that's, I.
It's the way of the world.
I mean, it's all, we don't have the money to go.
Industry, commercial.
We've got our speed, we've got our infrastructure.
Oh, I know, I drive them.
The tax dollars you receive versus what you spend.
And I think we owe it to the Fritz's to let them know what, where we stand.
Yeah.
I think that we shouldn't keep on going.
Right.
If we're gonna say, okay, so this is the planner's stuff, this is the, the engineer's stuff, and, uh, we really don't wanna create an ordinance just to do this.
Fifty-four bucks a square foot.
So.
Yeah.
I, I'm in agreement with everybody, I'm.
I'm not building a new day.
All right, well, I really don't wanna make that call.
Yeah.
You're gonna be quoting Secretary D.
I'll do it. Um, okay, all right, so chair report, um, uh.
Public comment.
So public comment, oh, public comments.
We got a little bit public here.
Oh, you've been commenting on.
I'm out of here.
Thanks, appreciate your mouth.
Yes. Okay, so no public comments, uh, so, uh, there was a DDA expenditure to pay interest only on the bond of six thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents that went out, when?
Last week, Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Okay, um, so other than that, that's my only chair report, other than kinda as we discussed in the training section with Mr. Smith, so the training thing was really kinda did everybody to a little, a little bit more insight into the Fritz project, so I thought the planner would give us one perspective and he would give us another, so this was, we had the planner's prospect, or the planner's aspect, and we had the engineer's aspect in, uh, there, there, uh, we used, and then, uh, I asked Dale to come in to give us a different, uh, perspective, so, um, I was trying to do, I was, I was really trying to do more than due diligence to get this project through, so behind the scenes, I've kinda worked a lot, um, talking to, uh, different planners, different, um, engineers, not just the ones that the village uses, but people that I know through my association, um, to figure out how to make this, to accomplish this project, and, um, my, uh, my gut feeling is, kinda the way Mr. Smith said, I didn't want Armada to go down in any aspect. That was, that was what I was afraid was gonna happen here, if we didn't get some of the amenities that we asked for.
Right.
And they pretty much have told me that they don't wanna deviate from this plan at all.
Ultimately, if that was the very last part, let's say, there was nothing else to do around it, in the entire, you know, through whatever the, you know, listen, the master has already been achieved, and that was it, well, okay, you know, the, the idea of creating a nice, you know, pocket isn't necessarily the worst thing, but that's the way that today's the starting point.
Yeah, yeah, cause it, the hundred acres that's undeveloped, really isn't all developable, but there's probably seventy acres that's probably it. So, and then, at one time, this was actually considered, I think, to be multiple, I don't know if it ever got into the master plan or the zoning map, but that one, that's when Depot was gonna be extended, and then this was gonna be apartments or condos, that was, that was the original plan after phase three. But when we lost Depot's, the extension of Depot Street, that kinda took this multiple off the, off the, uh, off the, uh, off the table. And when I talked to Brian about making this RM, his thing was, you're going through R1 without a collector's street, and could you do it? Yes, is it advisable? No.
But even RM wouldn't resolve anything for him.
No, it would not.
It helps.
It would help, it would help, yes, yeah.
But it still means we still have to take concessions.
And we'd have to rewrite the RM, because the RM criteria is actually more restrictive than this, because our RM is built, is designed over a multiple structure. So this isn't a multiple structure, it's multiple structures, so still an RM thing, but we still have to create a new RM ordinance to be able to do this. So then, so not only, then, then you wouldn't have, there would be, and, and the only way to do this, either the village would have to flip the bill to create this thing, so then you have public hearings, you got this, you got that, it's gotta go, uh, excuse me, we've, we've gotta come up with something, it's gotta be approved by the planner, uh, then you'd have to have public hearings with the, with the planner, uh, then you create a new zoning ordinance, or a, a change of the zoning ordinance, then it's gotta go to council, council's gotta do, uh, public, uh, public hearings to get it through their end, so that it's, it's a big deal to change what we've got. So I was still looking, even to do something as long as we didn't give away the funds. So we have a consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is?
The last adjournment.
Motion to adjourn at nine seventeen?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, don't move, you don't have to abstain this time.